Good morning. Got a slow crowd in here. Oh, let's see. Well, who's got to get out of here first? Kim, Johnny, Philip, don't do that. All right, Cameron, go ahead. I'm gonna set you up department updates.
All right. Update on paving. Phase two of the paving contract is almost complete. They only like up Bethany Road, then off Highway 108. And we're pretty much through with our paving in-house for the year. We like, uh, we're doing a little patching today where we installed some pipes and drainage pipes and things, but, uh, so we're almost complete with it. We're, we're gonna be right at thirty-two, a little over thirty-two miles for the year, which is exceeds our record of last year. And then, some of the roads have been resurfaced or have been striped, but the ones that haven't, we're lining those up to be striped here as soon as possible.
Do you use thermal plastic?
On some, some thermal plastic, some will be just paint.
Right.
We have a list of thermal flash roads that we're doing along with the, uh, some of them, you know, the low-traffic roads, some of them will be painted and the higher-traffic roads will be thermal flash.
Okay. Um, what about the, uh, Porceo Matthews was doing the... That lady that called about, um, I'm trying to think where that was at, when I sent you the notes. Was she driveway, not putting an apron on the driveway, did y'all get that resolved?
Yes, sir, we did. It was out off Pleasant Hill Road.
Yeah.
We had to add some gravel in there.
Well, gravel going to hold it, or she gonna get asphalt?
Yeah, I think the gravel will work. It was just a little drop off from the apron.
Okay. I was worried about the concern that she would be trying to come up on the asphalt and spin the gravel out right at the wheels trying to get it like these school buses do. So I didn't know if we needed to go back in there and put a bigger apron in there.
I think we've got it taken care of.
Okay.
Uh, we've also, we finished our mowing, shoulder mowing for the year, and we done four rounds of mowing for the year, and it's around sixteen hundred miles of mowing. And we're also, but the long arms now, we're still gonna run them throughout the winter to get caught up on some of the growth. And, uh, so, but we have shuttered Bush Hogs down for the year. And we got our flag and certification done on October 31st, and, uh, so everyone their road's is certi- flag and certified, and, uh, the city did send some people also, and, Philip, I checked with him before we had the class, and all his people are certified.
Okay.
So everyone in roads and water is flag and certified.
All right, good.
And that's about, that's about all we got.
All right. I'm gonna skip over you for right now, you gonna get it. Human resource, have any?
Um, just, y'all, as y'all know, the EPIPS went out on Friday, and we've had two people that have returned those.
Mm-hmm.
As up to date, and, uh, during, uh, in October, Alton had been working on the safety grant with our workers comp, and they got the check for five thousand dollars for that, and that went to fire to help with the, um, cleaning turnout gear, I think it's called extractors. And, um, met with Ethan Cowan on Monday, and they'll be getting the ball rolling as far as, um, some positions it's gonna be built.
So he's going to help us with that?
He is. He said that they could actually, as the applications come in, I'm looking forward to him, and he's gonna kinda go through on that and then bring recommendations back to y'all and help with the interviews and all that.
How does he advertise that? I'm sure it goes online?
Um, he's actually put it on the Gaza of Georgia Association of Zone Administrators and the Georgia Planning Commission. I have actually put it in our, in the progress, and I'm gonna put it, I've actually got it on the ACCG marketplace as well as some other...
He's gonna possibly put it on the GMA?
Yeah.
GMA marketplace, Georgia Municipal Association.
It's actually, actually already on there and ACCG.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we're just, you know, Matt, we'll be talking about the benefits, we're trying to get something, you know, something wrapped up on that so we can get a definitive date for opening on that.
All right. Al, you got anything? Ms. Payne?
Yes, sir.
(laughing). I'm not even, everybody else?
I'm just trying to tweak the budgets and get them ready for, um, presentation to you guys at the, um, at the board meeting and to get, hopefully, hopefully get an authorization to advertise the 2020 budget. And I just made the corrections or the adjustments that you all mentioned during the, uh, the budget meetings.
Did that leave us with a short file still, or?
Um, it doesn't, the way that I have it prepared now, um, rather than for the capital, the large capital expenditures, if we do capital leases for those, um, which will amount to about two million, seven thousand dollars, um, we will, we will have a contingency in that.
Good.
And I have those numbers, I'll, I'll try to give the, um, the recap numbers to you later by next Thursday, so you'll have the week to look at it, look at the, and call me if you have any questions or anything. That's about it.
I'm sorry. My attorney, our attorney was speaking.
Oh, okay. It's more important than me.
Some, uh, I don't, I ain't gonna go there. Leave that one. Question, Ms. Payne? Have you heard anything in the auditors when they gonna get cranked up and going?
Oh, my goodness, no, not yet. Well, he's supposed to say plus. During January.
You just sucked beer out of the room, didn't you? All right. Rodney, ladies in the building?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've, the county has finished up its, uh, part of actively, uh, pursuing LUKA, which is a program underneath the census, so we're completely through with that. We've got all the submissions submitted on to the 2020 census people. Uh, the only thing we have left is maybe a program or so, uh, in which we try to advertise how they're gonna go forward. It's gonna be either online or you can do it on your phone, that sort of stuff. They're trying to limit the number of people that actually have to go door-to-door. They don't wanna do that anymore, so, uh, we need to get the word out. That's what we're working on. The landfill, uh, the gentleman has contacted me, uh, they're gonna drill one more well. EPD has required us to drill one more well, needing clarification on the backside of the property. Uh, that's gonna be done in the next couple of weeks. Excuse me. EPD and their inspection did like it, they were happy with it. We have gone back to a quarterly system because, excuse me, we've finished the monthly reporting, and everything so far, they're satisfied with. There's a little outs and ins that we're trying to get EPD satisfied, and then we should be able to get that report sent to them, and it should, uh, hold us for, I wanna say it's five years.
The, uh, the dump was officially closed back in, uh, 2006, wasn't it? Two thousand six, that's, how much, how mu- has anybody gotten the idea, how long are we gonna have to keep paying to monitor this dump site? Probably another twenty-five years, probably?
At least.
Really?
Probably forever.
Yeah. Nothing like having your own dump on your county property?
No.
For the county, all right. Um, anything else going on?
Uh, just doing a few minor subdivisions. Uh, our building permitting is up for the year, uh, the revenue is up for the year, so we've had a very good year, and we're very happy about that.
All right. Any other questions for Rodney? Kim, I mean, I'm sorry, Philip.
Same difference. There was, there was, no, I don't want to. Uh, we've been busy this year. We finally got called up, uh...
Slow down.
Wednesday or Tuesday. I say called up, we still got quite a bit of stuff to do, but from what we was back in about May, uh, we finished Lawson's Landing probably in September, it's complete. Uh, which said, uh, a hundred and eighty-three meters this year, and seventy-five of them was Lawson's Landing, so all of last year we said seventy-one, so we're up a hundred percent on that. Uh, we finished tape fire station for, uh, messed up on my days. Tuesday. We got it finished, so we're out of their way. Uh, we just got a couple meters we gotta set, couple little projects we're gonna be working on in the next month or two, uh, putting a pump station in subdivision and whatnot, and we're gonna start it Monday, and gonna try to have it done before Thanksgiving. Uh, it's pretty urgent. And we, I had the, done the brine operation, we started it, uh, first of October, I had a guy come down from, uh, Wisconsin, and when I went through the whole system and made sure everything was out of programs and calibrated all the instruments, and it started up. We put a new satellite tank out on the west end at Jerusalem and Henderson Mountain. We got it, the pump and everything was wired in yesterday, so when I get back from vacation, we're gonna start filling all of our satellite tanks up. And we've got, how many sprayers? We got three sprayers coming. Uh, there are two hundred of y'all on sprayers, and they got three different settings on them. We can spray mist or single jet or triple jet. It just depends on the road and how much solution we wanna put down, and it's gonna be beneficial for us with our critical infrastructures to get them done quicker with pickup trucks instead of big trucks such as the sheriff's department, the nursing homes, the hospitals, REA, you know, stuff like that. That way, we can get EMS or SO to wherever they need to go or the power company ourselves. So that's, they're supposed to be in here this week, I've not seen them yet, so hopefully they'll be here before Thanksgiving.
You have any, I don't mean to interrupt, do you have any other communication with the Bent Tree, Big Canoe, sitting down?
Yeah, uh, Big, Big Canoe, they're, I'm waiting on them to get their tank plumped in, and Jacob with the, uh, Public Works up there, he's gonna call me as soon as it's done, and we're gonna take them, their, their load, they're gonna buy five thousand gallon, yeah, five thousand gallons. Uh, I talked briefly with Bonnie and Brandon the other morning about it, and I'm gonna meet back with them when I get back from vacation and, you know, see how they wanna do it. And I told them if, you know, during an event, we can't deliver, we can't sell because we have to take care of our, our roads and our, our priority list before we can do theirs.
Has Tom Fowler with Bent Tree had any contact with us of what they wanted to up there?
They had nobody from Bent Tree's dollars or reached out for it.
All right.
Uh, one more thing left. Oh, yeah, I'm, uh, currently, I've sent out emails to some department heads that in Boss, we're planning for a Winter X exercise, probably the first week of December, that's gonna pull all of us together that deals with the winter weather, and we're gonna make sure our priority list, our priority road list is up to date, our critical infrastructure facilities is up to date, and have a plan. Kim's guys know where they gotta go when we activate. Uh, that's another key thing, is when we activate our brine operation, you know, we're not gonna go off of when it's right there in Rome, we're gonna go when it's on the west side of Alabama. You know, that's what the state of Georgia does. When it hits the west side of Alabama, they activate, whether it comes or not, we're being prepared.
Have you had any other contact with the DOT that want to come over here and look at our system?
They reached out Monday?
Monday.
Monday, and wanna come look at it and go through it, and because he's got other individuals in surrounding counties that's interested in it and wanna see how it, how it was, how it operates and the timeframe of getting one from start to finish for their operation.
And Raven County wants to, they call, they want to come and look at our special facility, because Martin gets a lot of bad weather.
All right. Update on the brand new water treatment plant and the tank?
Uh, we've got the paperwork, if I'm not mistaken, and the Salvation Army's, we're waiting on them for the, I guess, signatures for the property, and once that happens, we'll be ready to go. They're still in the planning phases of finally wrapping it up for the intake and the intake line, but once we get that done, then they're gonna be able to move forward, and it's gonna move a lot quicker than it has in like six months, but they, with the Salvation Army, I mean, there's so many steps that we have to go through to get signatures.
Right.
You know, so we're having to wait on them, but Jeremiah, he, he's, you know, handling that for the Salvation Army.
And the city, we checked on them yesterday.
The city is probably, I'm gonna say probably a thousand foot from Wendy, was that Wendy Hill Road?
Wendy Ridge.
Wendy Ridge, and once they get to Wendy Ridge, they're, they're probably two miles, mile and a half from being at the Salvation Army.
That's where the tank site's gonna be.
Yeah. So, I'm figuring if, once we get the signatures in from Salvation Army, it's probably about a year when we start up.
Okay.
Is my estimation.
All right. And I think that's it.
Mr. Nixon, ELC, EMA, Philip touched on the brine, the Winter X project. We have our ENPG grant ready to send in, and that'll get us some more money, like, every year, hopefully, same amount. And then, my ALMIG roads, I've road measured them, I got them ready to submit to DOT. The district engineer gave us permission to go ahead and send them in now, so, that's good.
All right.
And we'll get that, it's roughly, the contracted out thing will be roughly twenty-one to twenty-two miles.
Can you give, uh, give us something on CIRC program?
CIRC?
Mm-hmm. What? Getting that this time?
He's had one class trained, the other one, he and Big Canoe can't get the dates worked out, because they just have busy lives and lots of things going, and finally, then they cancel out, so that was really sort of a flippant limbo.
Going to Big Canoe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They're really interested in it, talking to Ricky, but they just can't get their dates worked out.
Okay.
And I'm sure with the holidays coming, it won't happen between now and Christmas, I just don't see it. But they wanna do it a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you know, make it short, instead of all one day a week, so...
Get in and get it over with.
Yep.
All right.
That'd be Class Two. She's got, at the high school, she signed up, like, I think she told me yesterday, ninety-eight new students for the next program to start. So Philip and I'll probably have to go and talk to those students before Christmas break.
Okay.
So...
All right. Recreation Center?
Recreation, so, we have started basketball. We've been practicing since about the end of October. This year, we have forty-three basketball teams and three hundred and eighty-four kids playing through the recreation department this year. So our first games will start on around December the second, and then from that point, we'll play pretty much the entire month of December, and we'll take off around Christmas break, and then we'll come back after the first of the year and finish up a little basketball. Couple of, uh, important dates, we'll be closed on eleven-eleven for Veterans Day, also will be closed on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for Thanksgiving holidays, so I wanna get that out there as well. Make sure you put on your calendars, that we'll be having the county Thanksgiving lunch at the rec center on the twentieth. So we'll have that in the community room, and make sure, um, that gets passed out to all the other agencies as well. Um, we have currently finished with the dugouts on Field Two. We got the new slabs poured, we got the new fencing up and the new roofs on. Now that we're done with Field Two, we're gonna start on Field Three, start to get poles done, slabs formed up, and we should be finished with Field One by the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, other than that, we're just playing basketball, and community center is staying wide open, and it's being used by basketball teams and everybody else.
And so keeping all the rooms rented?
Yes, sir. Especially during the holidays, because can't really do much outside with the rain and the cold, so everybody's coming inside, so we're staying busy, um, pretty much every Saturday and Sunday till after Christmas.
Okay. Any other issues with the building?
Not at this time. Um, everything's running correctly, like on wood, um, with all the AC units and heating units, so we're doing okay right now.
All right. Any further questions for the staff before we get started with the insurance?
We're ready for Matt.
I've got two, uh, I got two district commissioners that are insurance professionals, so I'm just gonna sit back and watch.
That's dangerous.
Oh, Matt Bidwell, thank you for coming to make the proposal, I appreciate you for doing this, and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bidwell.
Thank y'all for having me here. Are you okay with me sitting here?
Sit, stand.
Trying to speak up?
Yeah.
Um, I gave you, uh, a handout, and on page one, I always like to talk about what happened a year ago. A year ago in September, we were, our claims were trending well through the summer of eighteen, and so we asked Blue Cross for the renewal early, and they gave us a no rate change on anything. And shortly thereafter, the wells started coming off the wagon. So we had no rate increase last year, no benefit changes, no, no changes on any of the benefits. So that was a year ago. On page two, I have our medical and pharmacy claims laid out, and I want to talk about this ever so briefly, if I may. The very far right-hand column are the premiums that the county pays each month, and you can see for the last twelve months, the county paid three point one million in premiums, and the column next to it is the total amount of medical and, and pharmacy claims paid by Blue Cross, which is four point six eight million. And, uh, I wanna break that down, if I may. When you look at the pharmacy column, we had just under eight hundred thousand in pharmacy claims, our medical claims were almost three point nine million. And what makes or breaks any health plan is that it's generally, you've got about two percent of your covered membership, and in our case, we have about four hundred and sixty-five men, women, and children on coverage. It's generally about seven or eight of those will account for half our claims. And on your sheet, you can see that we had two very significant claims this year. We had, we had two claimants that actually went over a million dollars each. I mean, it was just, and it, and it happens, and, uh, and so, in the last five months, if you go from April through August, we've had over two million dollars in claims just in the last five months. And so, when you're trying to get a renewal from an insurance company, you want to time it. Last year in August, we were running great, I want that renewal. This year, we've been saying, oh, we'll wait a little longer, we'll wait a little longer, and, uh, that's, we've got, I'm gonna turn page three, and we waited as long as we could, and finally Anthem, Blue Cross Anthem, released a renewal increase that was approximately, uh, maybe it was about a forty percent plus increase in premiums. And that's reflective of the claims that they have up until the time. And they also look very heavily at the large claims that are going on, and they try to determine whether or not they're gonna continue into the following year, and so that plays into where they wanna give us on the renewal. We sent this out to a number of carriers, and the only carrier that was willing to give us another fully insured rate was Cigna. And Cigna came in at about forty percent above current, they, they were, they were about five, six percent below Anthem, but they had one caveat on their offer. We have one person who's, who's ongoing with a big claim, and their caveat was that person's not gonna be covered next year. And, and, and just let me explain to you how that person could possibly not be covered next year. In the state of Georgia, they have a law out there that's called Extension of Benefits. A lot of people aren't aware of it, and I brought it to Anthem's attention, and they were very solemn and quiet, and they said, yes, you're right. But if a, if you're under a fully insured group plan, such as what we're under, and we have the policy terminate, and we go with another insurance company, the existing insurance company in place has to continue to offer coverage, uh, to any member who is disabled and continuously disabled on the day that this coverage terminates, so that if on December thirty-first, when we terminate our Anthem policy, if indeed we did, anybody who is currently disabled under our current plan, even though we might change to Cigna, Cigna, Blue Cross, would be responsible for claims on anybody who's disabled and unable to work on any claims related to that. So there's a very significant, that we have some very sick people here who could very well still be considered disabled and continued covered under the, under the, uh, Blue Cross windshield policy. But that was the contingency that they gave us on that rate. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, and that's how they could possibly not be covered under next year.
How long?
That person would have coverage.
Yeah.
But just with the old Blue Cross policy, and they can't charge us premiums.
How long, how long would, yeah, Blue Cross, Blue Anthem could still charge us premium on that, on that, could not charge us premiums?
They could not.
Okay.
They have to cover the disability free of charge.
How long, how long would that last?
Twelve months.
So did that twelve months say we cut that off?
Then Cigna would have to pick up the risk.
Okay.
So Cigna gave us that offer with the contingency that that, we, we have a very sick member, that that member would be eligible for extension of benefits under the prior plan.
Would Cigna have to pick them up, not allow, or?
On the, on the renewal?
Yes.
What we, what Cigna would have to do, is Cigna would have to agree to cover that member, and they would, for anything not related to their disability.
Right.
So see, technically, Anthem only has to cover conditions related to the disability, but anything, so if I have a head cold or if, uh, something comes up that's not related to the disability, Cigna would cover that. But Anthem, uh, Cigna does not wanna be, they would refuse to take any responsibility for any claim related to the disability, and that's because Anthem would be covered in.
But after twelve months?
Then Cigna has the whole thing.
And they have to take it?
Yes, oh, it's there. But then again, if it's ongoing, then they would price that into their renewal in two thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
So, yeah, I know. I'm not recommending any of these, I'm just trying to explain to you what's on the table, and it is confusing. When I saw y'all's stuff, if y'all could go to page four, I'm gonna spend the most time probably on this page, and I know Rob said y'all are experts, but I'm gonna take time.
Please do, they stood awhile.
Um, what we're, what we think would be work in your best interest is to look at a, I'm gonna call it a partially self-insured option. There's a number of reasons why you look at that. You've got a couple of claims out there that may or may not materialize next year, and the insurance companies are gonna price them into those premiums, and if those claims don't happen, you just kiss your premiums goodbye. Whereas if we go on a self-insured option, if the claims happen, we pay them, but if they don't happen, then we keep our money. And this is what these numbers reflect. So when you start looking at being self-insured, everything is itemized out, and every, and you've got really about four main components you have to have. When you go self-insured, you have to have somebody to pay the claim, and that's called your administrator, and they call it an administrative charge. And this administrator can be Blue Cross, it can be Cigna, it could be a third-party administrator, and the third-party administrator that I chose for you, we stuck with, was Core Source. So what the administrator does is when the employee calls in and wants to know how the insurance works, they talk to them. When the bill comes in from the hospital, they pay the hospital, and then they coordinate getting the money to the hospital and from the county to the hospital. That's what the administrator does. And the administrator has a charge for it. You can see that Anthem has a charge of thirty-five, you got the Cigna charge, and you got a charge for Core Source. There's other charges that are optional that we put down there, and those other charges are gonna be things like for their wellness programs, for utilization management, some, some items that we think that, uh, the teledoc services, and so we, we do recommend that if you go this route, that you do put those charges in there, um, and that's part of the administrative charge. Now, when you come down, and by the way, these charges, they're all per employee per month. It's not per, per person, but it's per employee per month. Now what happens is, everybody hears about all the money on pharmacy that's getting spent. What happens in the backside, and you don't see this because you're fully insured, is that with brand drugs and specialty drugs, there are rebates paid back to the people who actually purchased the drugs. Those rebates currently are being maintained and held by your insurance company, Anthem. So the rebates that they anticipate you guys earning with Anthem is approximately twenty-six dollars and fifty-six cents per employee per month. Cigna estimates thirteen thirty-nine, because they're giving us fifty percent rebates, they're not gonna give us the whole rebate, and Core Source is providing the whole rebate, and they provide it at twenty-nine seventy-nine. Now, one thing to note, and I'll bring this up again, is that the way a rebate works is that you have a quarter where pharmacy is small. So like, the first, January, February, March of two thousand twenty, employees buy drugs. The rebates that are paid back to the administrator or to your insurance company, those rebates get paid back over the next six months, which means that rebates earned in January, February, March are paid back to the insurance vendors in April, May, June, July, August, and September. So you don't actually get the rebate paid to you until October, which is six months after the quarter ended. Now what Anthem is doing is rather than make you wait for a settlement, they're basically, they're going to give you... they're going to give you that credit every month. They're going to give us a $26.56 credit, and then at the end of the year, they're going to go back and do retro accounting, and they'll probably end up owing you more money. What the others are going to do, both Cigna and Core Source, they're going to wait and pay that rebate to you as they actually accrue them. So that means that, and this is a money lag, it's nothing more than a time lag on the money. And it's, you're basically, I think when this gets analyzed out, it's about $100,000. So Anthem's going to give it to you upfront, month by month. The others, you're going to get it paid to you, but it's going to be more on a, on a six-month lag. And that's really just a budgeting. MSI gets paid, this is what we, we are paid to manage the account, provide all the enrollment material, the consulting, your online enrollment system. Network charge, if you notice Anthem and Cigna do not have a network charge. That's because they use their own networks. Core Source is going to use their network, and then by the way, they have about, they have access to about, I'll say over 30 different networks. They have access to Anthem, in the future they'll have access to Anthem, they currently have access to Cigna, Aetna, and a number of other networks. But the network, when they do a network evaluation, they will actually take our claims, they reflect them off of the discounts they know that those insurance networks get. And insurance networks, they don't pay the doctors and hospitals the same amount of money. So you want a network that's going to be discounted the best. The best discounted network that they had access to this year, it came out to be Cigna. So they're actually going to be using a Cigna network, if indeed you went that route, if you go that route. Once, if indeed you went with Core Source, on your renewal, they have access to Aetna, and because you're not with Anthem, they could actually show you an Anthem/Blue Cross network. Anthem will allow them to use their network, but not if they're currently with Anthem.
And let me, let me ask this question for Jerry and Becky, and everybody sitting here, going with Core Source, and they're going to use Anthems or, and/or Signas?
They would only use Cigna this year, but next year, if you wanted them to use Aetna or Blue Cross, and see, the reason you'd want to ever switch a network is that if we ran the numbers and it said that's a better discounted network, and for what they're charging for it, it's worth it.
Yeah, and I understand that. Where I'm going with it at, though, and the concern of all these people sitting here, is the networking of the fact that we have to change our physicians.
There is, I always say it's a 99% match, in case there is one out there. All your major provider groups are going to be on both Cigna and Anthem. Now, where you may get a one-off is, let's say I've got a doctor up in L.J. who's an independent, and maybe he's on Anthem, but he's never been contracted with, with Cigna. That's always a possibility, but it's not that Cigna wouldn't contract with them. But by and large, Cigna and your Anthem networks, they're going to be almost identical networks, particularly if you're talking Northside, Wellstar, Piedmont, Emory, all those major hospital systems, they're on all of them.
Okay.
It's just the one-off independence that you might catch one that never got contracted.
That's going to be a question that'll come up as we go forward, and I just want to be sure we get that clear in the start.
Okay. And then, so, so far what I've talked about is I've talked about your administrator, you've got to have a network, and then you also have to have a, have, and I talked briefly about the pharmacy, but on the pharmacy rebates, you have to have a pharmacy manager. And when we go with Aetna or Blue Cross, we have to use their pharmacy managers. And when you're dealing with, with either of them, when you're dealing with a pharmacy manager on a group that has under 500 employees, they require us to use their pharmacy manager. Now, what happens when I go to someone like Core Source, they can use any pharmacy benefit manager they want to, and they have access to over 20 different pharmacy benefit. For your loss proposal, we got CVS, we got Optum, we had another one, I can't remember the name of it, but we also, the one we settled with was Scrippsource. And all these pharmacy benefit managers, they're all geared toward, you know, what type of drugs are your employees, what is your loss issue here? And so, you pick your pharmacy benefit manager according to what your needs are. Typically speaking, the pharmacy benefit managers that we can get that aren't associated with Cigna and Anthem, they give us more flexibility, they do things where they can really make a difference on saving money. And to give you an example, I don't know if anybody here, if you take any kind of a drug where you're paying for it, a brand drug, you go on the internet and get coupons almost all the time. Well, the pharmacy benefit manager that we've got Core Source plugged into, they have a, they have an automated coupon program that they've estimated is going to save us $72,000 just in coupons. And it doesn't cost the employee anything, but basically, if I'm taking Crestor, and there's a coupon out there, they automatically pull the coupon, they contact the member and help them get it, and it reduces the cost to the county and to the member. So they have a coupon program that actually automatically kicks in. They have available international mail order on drugs. It's a list of about 200 drugs. Employee can look at it, they can get their drugs mailed in. If indeed we had anybody, and this is not our case, but if we had somebody who was taking an expensive medicine on a regular basis, they have what's available, it's called a concierge service, they guarantee a 50% reduction on the cost of the drug, and the only thing the member has to agree to do is to get a passport. But literally, we have, we have members that are paying between a half a million and a million dollars a year for prescription drugs, and we can put them on a plane and fly them down to the Cayman Islands, and then get that drug for a fraction of the cost. And the way, the concierge service, they work this through HR, so we don't kill, we don't surprise the employee, but we contact the member, and we tell them they can get the drug for no cost, they have to get a passport, we arrange transportation to the airport, they don't do anything. They're told what flight to get on, someone picks them up to the airport, they take them to the hotel, they're down there for a day, they have, somebody pick them up to the hotel, take them to the hospital across the street, they are seen by a doctor, verified, get the drug issued, get back on the plane, and go back the next day. And they guarantee a minimum of 50% savings on the cost of the drug. And it generally is going to happen when someone's on an injectable.
How much, what is the supply that they could get?
It depends on the drug. Sometimes they can get a 90-day supply, sometimes they may, they got to go down there every month to get it. And again, it's a voluntary program, a member doesn't have to do it, but generally speaking, this is the kind of resources that you can get through the, through these PBMs. We are actually, when I leave here, I'm going over to Barrow County, we're actually putting in that PBM at Barrow County, and they have a handful of people who are on drugs that expensive. And we think it'll, it'll make a big impact. Now, while I'm talking about that, don't, don't lose your page, but I wanted to just remind you, you all spent about $800,000 in drugs, and when your claim spiked, your prescription drug coverages didn't spike that much, those are not issues that are, that we're going to get a lot of savings. They think that on your $800,000 pharmacy bill, they think they can save us $160,000. And that's factored into our, to our analysis. And so, on some groups, that savings gets into the closer to a million dollars, but in your loss situation, they're going to give me lower costing on the drug, they're going to give me the coupon advantages, but we don't really have anybody here at the county that's taking anything that's going to, they're taking, we've got, don't get me wrong, we've got expensive drugs, but when you factor in the other expenses, you'll see that that may not be what we want to do. And let me show you what I'm getting to. The last thing we have to do is we have to deal with insurance. When you go self-insured, you have to buy insurance. And the way you buy insurance is you buy insurance on each member. And remember, here at the county, we've got 465 men, women, and children, and for a group your size, a relatively modest deductible, believe it or not, is $100,000. And what that means is that the first $100,000 in a claim on any one person is actually paid by the county. Anything above that gets paid by the insurance. So, we had a million-dollar claim last year, and the county's responsibility on that would have been $100,000.
But this other insurance kicks in after that.
That kicks in, and it kicks in automatically, so you're not billed a million to get reimbursed. Once that, once that $100,000 cap, I got to talk to the money, once, once that $100,000 cap gets hit, then their insurance is paying the rest of it. Now, insurance, if you look at the prices on that, by the way, $160, $163, $177. That is the cost to buy a $100,000 deductible on every person in this county. Think about that, think about that. Now, aggregate coverage is coverage that says, once your total claims hit a certain dollar amount, we don't care, you know, they're under $100,000, but they hit a certain dollar amount, then the insurance keeps paying on them, they'll start paying. And I think the aggregate coverage limits for us were somewhere around about 3 to, about 3.5 to 4 million. So what they're saying is, at any given point, you have claims that are under $100,000, once they hit this level, aggregate coverage says we're going to pay them no matter how small they are. A lot of employers don't buy aggregate coverage. They don't buy it. This policy's probably costing you about $20,000 a year. We recommend strongly that you do buy it, the auditors like to see it. It's, it, but for our new group going in, we would definitely encourage you to buy the aggregate protection. And the reason I'm saying that people don't buy it is that when insurance companies price you on the aggregate coverage, they price you to where they think you're going to hit 75% to 80% of what, of what it is. And so, you're going to see a couple of numbers on the bottom, it's called the expected claim liability and the maximum liability. That expected claim liability under Anthem of $1,037, that you probably, that's probably going to be dead-on what you're going to do. It's going to be really, really close. They're really good about projecting those claims out, and that's per person. And when you see that maximum liability 30% higher, it's, I had an underwriter at Blue Cross who retired, he worked there 40 years, and he said in his 40 years, he saw that aggregate hit less than, he said I could put him on one hand, the number of times somebody hit an aggregate claim, and he said the only reason they hit it is because we made a mistake. You're not going to have an aggregate claim, but that's what it's out there for. So now, going through here, what I've tried to point out is you've got an administrator, a pharmacy manager, your network, and you've got to have insurance. On the bottom are the caveats that go with this. When you're buying reinsurance, an insurance company says, I'm going to buy you $100,000, I'm going to sell you $100,000 deductible on each member, they are selling you an unknown risk. They, they don't know what you're going to have. When they look at our claims data, and they see an individual that they feel is going to be having a lot of claims next year, they do one of two things, they give that individual a higher deductible because it's not a risk, it's a no, we're just going to make a payment. Or they increase your premiums by the amount of the deductible they raise it. So what Anthem has given us is there is one individual here at the county that they feel could very well hit a half a million dollars in claims next year, and so, they're excluding them, or not excluding, but they're giving that person a $500,000 deductible. The other 464 people have $100,000 deductible. Okay? Anthem is going to give their RX rebates immediately, and so forth. Cigna looked at your data, and they came to the same conclusion that Anthem did, that if indeed this person is under the insurance next year, they want a $500,000 exclusion, and they're going to pay the RX, the pharmacy rebates retroactive. And Core Source looked at the data, and they saw two additional individuals that they were uncomfortable with, and they said that they wanted $160,000, $170,000 in addition to the $500 deductible on those members. And again, they're going to pay the RX rebates retro. And the reinsurer that they are using is for the health security, and they're going to use the Cigna network. Now, this here is kind of how the sausage is made, but I wanted, I wanted to painstakingly go through it, so when I get to the next page, it makes sense. And we can go back if we need to. On page five, across the top line is all your administrative pharmacy rebate credits, that's called your fixed cost, that's on the top line. And with Anthem, it's $211, Cigna's $219, and Core Source's $253. Anthem thinks your monthly expected claims are going to be approximately $1,037 a month. Cigna thinks they're $971. And the Cigna network through Core Source, on the same network, they think it's $1,057. And then the aggregate is your maximum liability number. So when we take all these numbers times the number of employees, our first yellow line is probably the most important line. This is your actual fixed cost. Your actual fixed cost under Anthem, when you take the $211 times your 249 employees times 12 months, is $632,000 in fixed cost. With Cigna, came in at $654, and Core Source is $758. So the fixed cost is actually highest with Core Source. And then they take what they expect your claims to be, and you can see that number underneath it, Anthem thinks they're 3.1 million, Cigna thinks they're going to be 2.9 direct, Core Source through the Cigna network thinks it's going to be 3.1. And I'm going to stop just a second, I always like common sense. Our 12-month claims that I gave on that French chart was 4.7 million, 4.6 million, and we know that we had two individuals in there that had about $2 million in claims. So, when they sit there and tell me they think my claims are going to be about 3, 3.1 million, that accounts for about a 7% to 8% increase, which is what you see in the medical pharmacy trend area, you're probably going to have about $3 million in claims next year. You probably are. That's, those are good numbers, though those are not something that's just being pulled out of a hat. So when you take your fixed cost and you add it to what they think your claims are going to be, Anthem's at 3.7, Cigna's at 3.5, and Core Source is at 3.9. What's not included in my Cigna and Core Source numbers is the fact that Cigna really wants your business, and they're going to waive $110,000 in fixed charges next year to try to get your business. And that's fine, I mean, Blue Cross is aware of it, and they, it was 80,000, they raised it to 110. And they, and it's, and then, the pharmacy rebates for both Cigna and Core Source are not calculated above because they're not getting the credit on the, the actual monthly bill. But Cigna has given a 50% rebate, not 100, and they estimate that rebate you'll earn over a 12-month period will be about $40,000. Under Core Source, they're willing to give 100% of the rebates, and they estimate it will be about 90,000. Both Anthem and Cigna are offering you a $20,000 wellness fund. And I've got a note down there on Core Source about their, their, their program. Their estimated pharmacy savings of about 160, that's included in their numbers, but again, you know, they offer a lot of different features, bells and whistles, but I, I think they're, I think that really it's going to fall down to an Anthem or a Cigna option for y'all. And then we go to page six. I know you told me 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. An hour later, we're doing fine.
I tried to summarize it here, and I put all the boxes in one, one pile. Our current expense with Anthem, we're billed about $3.276 million. The employee cost is $529,000 is what they pay in deductions. So our total net cost to the county currently today is 2.7 million. Does everybody see that on the top line? And if we bring our eyeballs down, you can see if we renew with Anthem, fully insured, the premium's going to 4.5 million. That means the net cost goes to three point nine, and honestly, I just don't even see that as an option. That's just me, and I'll, we'll talk more about it. Cigna is at four point one on a fully insured. With the, um, uh, employee deductions, it comes down to three point nine, almost three point six million. But that has a big caveat on it, that that member has to be disabled to not be under, under their policy. When you come down and you look at the self-insured options, the most important column to look at, believe it or not, is your fixed cost. That first column is six thirty-two, six fifty-four, seven fifty-eight. That is money you're guaranteed that you're going to spend. The thing with the Cigna is that while theirs is slightly higher than Anthem, they're gonna waive a hundred and ten thousand dollars of those six, of those fixed costs. They're gonna waive a hundred and ten, and that's not included in these numbers, I'm just, it's not in there. They, Cigna's thinking your claims directly are gonna be two point nine. Honestly, I think, you know, that's an estimate. Honestly, I think your claims are probably gonna be closer to three, three point, three million, three point one. But if you, looking at the contract, the total cost under the Anthem self-insured is estimated at three point seven. Cigna's three point five, Core Source three point nine. You put your employee deductions onto it, and the net cost with Anthem is three point two. With Cigna, you're showing three point oh, but also I got a hundred thousand dollar savings, so it's really gonna be more like two point nine, and three point three for the Core Source. Now, I'm also showing you the, the worst-case scenario. So what happens if that, you, you end up, do have, you know, a lot of small claims, and, and you go from three million up to, you know, three point five, three point six million? Your net maximum annual cost under Anthem could be as high as three point nine, Cigna three point seven, Core Source four point one. So that's if the wheels fall off the wagon, and honestly, you know, uh, it, I just don't see that materializing. Just don't see it. I don't think I've confused you all enough. So I have to add one other little tidbit of confusion to it. When you buy insurance, we're used to buying, I, I buy car policy, I wreck my car. They're gonna fix my car even if I cancel my insurance the next day. They're gonna fix it because my car got wrecked. When you go with self-insured, the claims, all our contracts are based upon those claims that happened during the twelve-month period. But if you think about it, claims in November, October, November, December of two thousand and twenty are probably not gonna get paid until January, February, two thousand and twenty-one. Okay? These numbers that I'm showing you are what are referred to as matured numbers. If you're looking at this from a cash flow standpoint, these numbers include the claims that are going to get paid in January, February, and March of two thousand and twenty-one that happened in late two thousand and twenty. So as you're looking at this, about fifteen percent of your claim liability, which is, what, about two hundred thousand dollars maybe or so? You might put that in there as the budget, but it, literally, I'm not, again, I'm not sure on the budgeting, but the, you're gonna have the liability, but it's not physically gonna be paid till two thousand and twenty-one. So it does also give you that cash flow. And, and if I was budgeting on this, I would budget that expected cost, and, and you still have fluff in it, because you should still have a couple hundred thousand dollars left in at the end of the year because of how the claims are gonna flow. You'll still be okay.
At the beginning of the year, a lot of the claims that come in will actually belong to Blue Cross.
Yes, what'll happen, whatever you wanna do, what'll happen is you probably will not hit, your claims from Anthem, Blue Cross, they're fully insured, those are, if you terminate the policy, Anthem's responsible for paying all those claims all the way through the end of December of this year. Starting January one, when you get set up, you're gonna be billed probably about the second week of, um, January for your fixed cost, which is gonna be about sixty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars or so. And then you really won't start seeing claims come in till probably early February, 'cause they have to go to the doctor, show their ID card, it has to get filed, it has to be approved. And the way Anthem and Cigna do this, it's sim, it's similar, it's a little different, but it's similar. What happens is, they pay the claim one week, and then, and at the end of the week, they tell you to put the money in your account so they can take it out. And they stop at the hundred thousand dollars, you know, to do Anthem, but, but that's essence how, how it works. I know I confused y'all, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I know what you're going, the, uh, but the overall bottom line is when everything's said and done, going self-insured, customer, employees are not gonna see any change whatsoever.
If you, if you make a change to Cigna, I always like to say this. The caveat is, is this is all built on the plan designs being the same. And so things that'll happen is, let's say, like, for example, Anthem uses Live Health Online as their teledoc service. Cigna uses, uh, a group, a, something called TeleDoc. It's not Live Health Online. So you're gonna see some changes, but the, the plan is gonna remain the same. Uh, what do we call it, level one benefits, it's gonna be the same copay, same deductible, same out-of-pocket. And, um, you know,
How many, can I ask, if you're getting into, how many counties are changing to this type? This type insurance, that's all we go for?
That's, that's a really good question. Um, when, when, we encourage people to change is when we think the fully insured insurance company have figured you, has figured you out. You all have just under five hundred members. I don't like to do somebody self-insured unless they've got eight, nine hundred, a thousand members. Um, the reason being is that the smaller you are, you get a little bit more of a roller coaster effect on your claims. The bigger you are, it's, it's, it's just like drawing a chalk line, it, it, it's just, you, you know where the claims are gonna be. I have about a half a dozen groups smaller than you all that are self-insured. Haversham County, uh, City Monroe, they're all self-insured. The, uh, the primary reason you go self-insured is when the insurance company thinks that they have figured you all out. And if, when you look at your, look at, look at Anthem, they're asking for four point five million in premium. Well, your net, you're, you're, and, oh, let's go four point five, it's three point nine. And my gosh, if we go self-insured and everything falls off the bus, it's the same cost. That, that, you know, there's just no way. When Haversham County went self-insured about three years ago, and they're about, they're about your all size, uh, Anthem was asking for two and a half million, and we're just saying, where are you coming from? And they ended up having a million dollars in claims, paid about three hundred thousand in fixed cost, and they cut their, they went in half their cost. I mean, and, and so, honestly, you all are probably gonna have somewhere around three million in claims, you got your fixed cost. I, I, I think it's a pretty solid number that you all have got here. And, and if you stay with Anthem, it's just a matter of them, the employees would see no difference. They just, they would just, it's a funding, it's a funding difference, it's just a funding difference. If you could change with Cigna, then, you know, we, you know, it's a, it's a change. I guess, I, I think the question you have to ask is, when you're looking at the difference in cost, you know, Anthem is six point three two on the fixed cost. You're gonna be, uh, with that hundred and ten thousand dollar credit, takes it down to five hundred and forty-four. So they're, they're giving you about a seventy, eighty thousand dollar fixed cost advantage the first year. And, you know, it, you know, and I, I think both of them are really good plans.
Faith, I know you have talked to, talked to Matt, we all have talked to Matt over the past, uh, three, four, or five weeks with Alton and Paula. Do you have any questions? Did you see any clips or bubbles in this thing as you went forward?
Most of the counties who do this, Matt, that, uh, would, would we just continue to, like you said, that if we, if we go this route, January, February, most likely, we're not gonna have a lot of claims, we'll have a fixed cost. Do they, um, set up an escrow account and just?
Both of them are different. If you go with Anthem, they don't set up an escrow account?
No, I mean, and we would set up.
Oh, you all, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Pay the claim, claim from.
Now, I, which,
What I'm thinking we would, what we would have to do is just continue to pay about what we paid Blue Cross now.
You'd have to put that in something, yeah.
A hundred thousand a month.
Yes.
Just, just start that in an escrow account. But then, what if one month, we have tons of smaller claims, maybe? If we had ten, ninety thousand dollar claims in a month?
I had, what now?
Ten, ninety thousand dollar claims in one month? That's what I'm looking at, is, is the cash flow aspect of it.
Sure, from a historical standpoint, um, you can't say it's not possible.
I know it's not.
But from a historical standpoint, I, I, I think that, I think I got the report right here on top. Get my glasses on. Claims over fifty thousand dollars in the last range twelve months, there was fourteen. And that was during the course of the whole year. It was a twelve-month period. And, and of those fourteen, three of them were over a hundred. So typically speaking, for a whole year, um, you're, you're gonna have claims come in sixty, seventy thousand dollars. But generally speaking, one a month is what you're averaging. If you had three or four in one month, what, again, what I suggest is that if you're normally paying right now to Anthem about, say, say, three hundred a month? If you're putting three hundred a month each month, then come March, you've got nine hundred aside in that account, and you've got yourself a pretty good.
Nest egg.
Nest egg built up. Now, there is one thing I can do, and I, but I think it's worthless, it's just kind of false hope. They do what they call an aggregating cap. And an aggregating cap,
That's an insurance, that's another, that's another insurance policy.
No, 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 no. Remember I told you, they showed you this maximum claim policy, that I told you you'd never hit? Your maximum claim, your maximum claims are currently had somewhere, with Cigna's three point six, okay? They'll take that number and divide it by twelve, and it's three hundred thousand. And so what they will do is they say, we'll give you a monthly aggregating cap, which means claims for January can exceed three hundred. February, it goes to six hundred. March, it goes to nine hundred. February, April goes to twelve hundred, I mean, goes one point two. So all they do is they'll divide the aggregate into twelve, and, and it really, it doesn't really help you at all. It still doesn't help you, 'cause you're always gonna have that liability accruing. But I, I think that the thing that does help you when you start this is you are gonna have a couple of months right out the door where you're not gonna be having those significant claims coming in.
I have a question here, Becky, don't mind. So I have a question. With the people that you have that have switched to this, how many do you have? How many companies, how many, how many companies do you have that switch to this, for the self-pay right now?
Oh, the self-insured? I'd probably say we have about, probably about twenty of our counties.
And of the twenty, how long have they been with this?
Have you been what?
With this self-pay.
Oh, self-insured?
Yeah, self-insured.
Once, once you go into it, you're gonna stay in it. There's absolutely no reason to ever get out of it.
So Becky could reach out to some of those people to see the pros and cons of it.
Well, sure, sure. Oh, yeah, here, here's where, where it is.
Cause I mean, if it's, you know,
Like, you're gonna have,
That's what we do. Like, I always reach out to somebody to say, what's the pros and cons of it?
Sure, what I can tell you is that, um, when you're self-insured, the reason you're going that route is because the plan has figured you out. And that, and I mean, they're asking for a four point five million dollar premium, and we're sitting here, and our maximum liability isn't even that much. It, it just doesn't make any sense to, to, to pay that premium.
Well, no, I get that part, but I mean, sometimes if it's too good to be true, it's too good. So there's always the pros and cons.
When, when we did Haversham a couple of years ago, I'm going back, I think it was three years ago, they, Anthem was asking for a two point five in premium. And they gave us a self-insured option, and they went with Anthem the first year. Their maximum liability on the self-insured option was two point two. And I asked Anthem to explain to me how they could ask for two and a half million in premium, but yet tell the client they can go self-insured. And if everything bad happens, it's only gonna cost you two point two. And they said, it's just the way the numbers are working. And, and so, you know, all the years that we've been, um, fully insured, we've been able to keep those paid claims in that eighty, ninety percent range. We've ended up with a couple of years where we've had a couple of really bad claims, but those claims were over. What is happening now is we're hitting, and we've got some ongoing active claims that are gonna bleed into next year in the care of your once a pound of flesh from us.
So the employee wouldn't see an increased cost?
Oh, employee doesn't, yeah, I will tell you this, and this is always the communication, it's up to you guys. When our groups that are self-insured, we let the employees know that, hey, the county's actually paying these claims. The administrator is, is paying the hospital, but they're taking it out of our checking account.
And then the coverage doesn't change?
And I, and I think, I think what it, we, what it tries to do with the employees, 'cause what we, our message is, is that, you know, we've got a limited amount of resources, and we all want them to go to the things that, that are beneficial. And so the attitude that I hope people get from this is, it's not Cigna or Blue Cross paying that claim, it's us. And, uh, and the more, uh, you know, we, we, we take care of ourselves, we get our checkups, we, we, uh, you know, we, we eat right, we exercise, because ultimately, claims that get paid just means it's less resources to go to other things than we like to go to.
Who approves the claims?
I'm sorry?
Who approves the claims?
But no, it's, the fiduciary responsibility stays with the, uh, with the administrator. And they're gonna have the same, uh, utilization.
So it would be the same as Blue Cross, Blue Shield, so the coverage would be the same.
See, we're paying them to do all that. We've turned the fiduciary responsibility over to them to, to do that. And it's, honestly, um, you'll hear people, um, people don't realize this, but if you see anybody with a, with any, any insurance card, ninety percent of them are self-insured, and they just don't know it. The employer's paying the claims. And literally, uh, if we go self-insured, you stay with Anthem, nobody here's gonna know it unless somebody, unless they tell them, because Anthem doesn't even tell them. Hope that helps.
I always like to know how long it's been around.
Oh, it's, 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 it's forever.
I never ask you anything.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right. Faith, any, Alton, Paula? That's Becky, you're there.
All right, guys. The only thing I, Paul had touched on briefly, if you're, if you're, we're, we, we need some sort of guidance, and I hope we, we don't have to wait till the twentieth, 'cause it was really gonna put a pinch on open enrollment. I'm not sure what we can do, but if needed, it's gotta wait till a voting meeting. In order for us to get open enrollment material ready, it takes us about two weeks. And, um, uh, if you make a decision to change the Cigna, it, it's gonna really cramp getting ID cards to people before January one. So just be aware of, if any kind of guidance you can provide to staff on what y'all wanna do, but maybe I'm,
As, as far as making a decision, if, I don't know if it's gonna have to go through the, the next board meeting's the twenty-first. So that's an efficient way out there, I don't know if there's any other options.
We could have a call, I mean, after we have time to study the material.
Sure, yeah, but, but,
Let's plan on a call maybe.
Yeah, one. Thank you all. No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Matt, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt, thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the, um, we're gonna slowly call this meeting to a, to an end, but I, I just wanna put a note out here. Rocky Moran McDowell are going through some hard times, the family. Rocky's very sick, uh, just like freaks, and everybody needs to remember them as, as we go through, uh, through these years. And you've got Christmas time coming up. Uh, just like preaching, everybody to remember them as, as we go through, uh, through these years, and you've got Christmas time coming up. Uh, thanks, she works for the Sheriff's Department, and it's, it's tough, and, and we do feel, uh, we do, we do hurt for them all. So please remember them in your prayers as we go forward. Other than that, in the other announcements, I'm going to call this meeting to an end. Y'all have a great weekend. Thank you very much.